Welcome to this regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today's December 7th. I'm Dan Hillmer, serving as mayor this year for the council. The first item on the agenda is the roll call. Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Harrah.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Councilmember Way is absent. Councilmember Candell may be a little late. Would you please arise if you're able and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the evening's agenda is public comment. Are there members of the public that are either in the audience or online that would like to make comments regarding items that are not listed on this evening's agenda? Allison, is anyone in the queue?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Thank you very much for closed public comment and move to presentations and proclamations. The first presentation this evening is an update from the Commons Foundation. Welcome, Mr. Jennings.
Thank you. My name is Joe Jennings. I'm the president of the Commons Foundation. I live in Seattle, but I formerly lived in Larkspur for 10 years. We wanted to update you of changes and developments at the Larkspur Commons Foundation so that you are up to date as we do go through a transition. I guess I can't see the slides. So just briefly, the Commons Foundation was actually started as part of the Friends of the Library and with the city with the goal of raising money to build a new library at the Commons, where the property the city owns at the corner of Rose Lane and Doherty Drive. The city gave us a $150,000 matching grant. We raised 150,000 in seed capital, and with those funds, we've raised a total of 5.35 million. I say 5.35 because there's $150,000 in the Maryland Rivers Historical Preservation Gift. We're not counting yet. So when you look at this accomplishment, we just wanted to come in and let you know we'd gotten over the starting line because this is the starting line of then matching the state money and building something and a thank you. Our hope, though, is that you'll agree to make us the designated partner to raise approximately a million dollars for the landscaping and outdoor program structures at the new facility, but that's another day. When you look at the funds that have been raised, you could step at this and just say, oh, they crossed the finish line. That's that. But you could also ask, so what have we built with the process of raising this money? And if you look at it carefully, 4.2 million in cash soon. I'm sorry, I can't see the screen. I hate being wrong with my own numbers is the problem. Right, roughly 4.2, I'm rounding up, and we're just around a million dollars in pledges. Of the 4.2, what we've built that the city didn't have five years ago is a donor base for a city department and a city function. So there are approximately 300 people, and in the 300, there are four who gave in excess of $250,000, 21 who gave between 50,000 and 250,000, 20 who gave between 10 and 50,000, 29 between 5 and 10, and then 225. This is a donor base the city didn't have before. This is probably one of our greatest assets. The second thing we did is we proved that a public-private model could work. There may have been some skepticism at the beginning. No, I know you would never think that, Kevin, but there may have been some skepticism when we started that a public-private model would work with Larkspur and the public, but it has worked, and the people have been amazingly generous. And their generosity continues. I literally collected an additional $25,000 pledge conversion this morning. All it cost was a cup of coffee and some time. So, and four years of development. But so you have this asset. The other thing the asset has is a set of partners. Among the partners, Friends of the Library, the Larkspur Library Foundation, the Larkspur Community Foundation, several family foundations are all resources for the city in this relationship in the future. And then you have volunteers. It's a crazy thing to ask people, would you go help us raise money for a city building on city land for a city department from private funds? And it's amazing, not just the donors, but dozens and dozens and dozens of people and thousands of hours were devoted to doing this. So these are the assets the city gets in addition to the money. And the key to nurturing the asset and growing it, because I believe it's growable, the level of generosity in this community is astounding, believe me, is fulfill the promise. Build a wonderful public library that's inviting. Even Dan Hillmer and I talked about this four years ago. It has to be something the public embraces. It has to be something that they then see as part of the fabric of the community. If you build something that is part of the fabric of the community and the community embraces it, the asset that helped you build it will grow as a result. that's about it. I'm now I'm gone. This is your last public, you know what, have me, someone said do a full Nixon. I won't do a full Nixon, but you now know what I mean. But I resigned from the board. Ann Morrison, former mayor, has agreed to be president, and she was elected on Monday. And we've also added Brock Wagstaff. So we've staffed up and we have a new team because this next stage will be different from the first stage. One last thing. Thank you and goodbye. I know it's Pearl Harbor Day, that's why you didn't pick today, but tomorrow, thank you very much. It made a huge difference to be recognized.
Thank you, Joe. Are there members of the council that would like to make comments? Gabe, Vice Mayor Paulson?
Sure, I'll go first. So I have to say, Joe, I got on the council, you know, when you were thick in the thick of this, and we had a lot of coffees together, and you brought such a unique set of gifts, and we're so indebted. I mean, it's the persistence, it's the smarts, it's the experience, everything. I just wanted to say tomorrow, December 8th, is my wife's and my ninth anniversary, but I told her it's, we're gonna have to change that because it's Joe Jennings Day. Thank you again.
Councilmember Harrah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Joe, and thank you for being here. And thanks, Ann, for being right behind him, literally and figuratively. I think I was here pretty much from the beginning of the dialogue that we have had about this project. And in fact, I looked back and I noted that I am recognized as a seedling donor because I think I gave like 50 bucks or something like that right at the outset. Yeah, around that, but that was enough to get you going, right? And here you are. This project has been phenomenal in its growth in terms of the engagement that the foundation has had with the city and the engagement that the foundation has had with our community and with the community of donors that you have been able to solicit to contribute to its success. Thank you. It has been, in large part, but not exclusively, the result of your efforts. And we are grateful for that. We are sad to see you in Seattle because that's far away, but you made the trip down here today, so we're grateful to see that as well. I think, as you said, we're kind of, we are at a transition stage because you've done a tremendous amount of work to get this thing going, and it is going. We're now going to move on to the next phase, thanks to your help. And I look forward to a very successful endeavor to make sure that we see a beautiful building erected on this site for the benefit of our community, not just in Larkspur, but collectively through the Ross Valley. And I look forward to working closely with Ms. Morrison to see that vision come to fruition. Thank you again.
Thank you. Councilmember Candell?
Yeah, Joe, sorry to walk in like that. I was getting a ticket on the way here, so we'll have to talk about that afterwards. I know, you know, I've been on the council for three years now. I know this library project has been going on for 15-plus years, and it has changed a lot in the last three years, and that is because of the leadership that has guided this through. And, you know, it's made a difference. It's going to be a lasting difference that people will see for, you know, for generations. And you should be just really proud. And we're all really grateful. And Gene and Ann and everybody else involved, it's been incredible to watch and to, I mean, we, you know, that's, you've been running the show, and we've been kind of cheerleaders in a sense, and you've done a fantastic job, and this is going to happen because of you. So the entire city is grateful. Thank you.
Are there members of the public, either in the audience or online, that would like to offer Joe comments this evening? Anybody in the room here? Well, I will say, on behalf of the city, thank you, Joe, for being a great and organizing a great partner with the city and enhancing not only the asset of the Commons, but the asset of the city, which is the property through the work you've done. You've added great value to the city assets, and I know this is going to be a great legacy for you. So I, Larkspur will always be your home. You're well-loved, beloved, and we're so grateful for all the hard work that you put into this. It's a generational gift. If there are no further comments, we'll move to the next proclamation. We have a proclamation, which we need to vote on, by the way, declaring December the 8th, 2022, to be Joe Jennings Day in the city of Larkspur. Before I has the council members, has everyone had a chance to review the proclamation? If not, if so, I'll accept a motion.
I move to proclaim December 8th, Joe Jennings Day, 2022.
Is there a second? Second and a third. All those in favor, do we need a roll call vote? Yes, we do.
Thank you. Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
For Harrah?
I think so, yes.
Thanks, Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes. The vote's unanimous. The proclamation passes, and I'll read it. This is the proclamation of the city council. Whereas Joe Jennings has served as president of the Commons Foundation since its formation in December 2018. Under Joe's tenure, the Commons Foundation has significantly improved the profile of the new Larkspur Library Project and helped to raise over $5 million in donations. And Joe Jennings' leadership of the Commons Foundation has been instrumental in building support for the new library at Rose Lane Project. And for all of these extraordinary efforts on the part of Joe Jennings, the city of Larkspur wishes to honor Mr. Jennings by declaring December the 8th, 2022, to be Joe Jennings Day. Now, therefore, it's resolved, yada, yada, December 8th, Joe Jennings Day.
Thank you both. Yes, we understand it's a team effort. All right, thank you very much. I'm sure that made everybody feel wonderful. We will move ahead with our agenda, which the next item is our consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that members of the council would wish to remove for further discussion? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or remove items from the consent calendar for comment?
Mr. Holmes, would you please tell us which item you would like to pull?
Yes, item 4.10, the RFP for the library. I don't know if you need to actually pull it or a staff report. I can just make a brief comment regarding it, but I would like to comment about the contents of the RFP.
I will allow you to make a comment in a moment. We will pull 4.10 from the consent calendar. If there are no other items, I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the consent. Oh, Mr. City Attorney has a comment. Thank you, Mr. City Manager.
All right. I'm just going to take care of a statutorily required announcement regarding item 4.3 on the agenda. State law requires an oral report summarizing proposed actions on salary, salary. I'm sorry, 4.8, not 4.3, thank you. State law requires an oral report summarizing proposed actions on salaries, salary schedules, and fringe benefits of executive-level city employees before approval. That includes department heads and the city manager. One of the proposed actions that's part of 4.8 is to amend the salary and salary schedules for the management unit, which includes department heads. The amendment would increase the top end of the salary range by 5% and approve coal as a 4%, 3%, and 3% for each year, starting in fiscal year 2324. The second proposed action is an amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, which would change the base salary from $232,368 to $244,005 annually. And that's the end of the report.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I would entertain a motion for the balance of the consent calendar minus item 4.10.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Would you please call the roll?
Either one.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar passes except for item 4.10. Now we will focus on 4.10. Mr. Holmes, you're free to comment.
Thank you. 4.10 relates to inviting proposals for the new library, and my request would be that the city documents which are sent out should include copies of the Commons Foundation literature, which shows a rendering of what the new library might look like. Doing this would show the RFP recipients what the expectations of the citizens and donors were, and that it will encourage the submittals to be more in line with those expectations. We definitely want to avoid getting anything like the very sharp-edged, industrial-looking library proposal that was unveiled some years ago, and that was panned by the public and which led to some city-sponsored considerations of what is the look and feel of Larkspur. And I believe that the Common Foundation's renderings responded to those considerations. And so I think that the Commons Foundation literature should be included in the RFP packet. And just as a final aside, the expectations regarding the library design may also impact, to some degree, any design for a related municipal building as the two buildings would presumably need to be compatible to some extent. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other public comments regarding this item? We will close public comment and bring this item back to the city council for consideration of adoption. It's a resolution, two resolutions, 94/22 and 95/22. I would, is there a council discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Allison, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on this evening's agenda is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, I have just one item I wanted to highlight this evening. It's been more than a year of lobbying from the Assistant Community Services Director to the city manager that he had a wonderful idea for Piper Park for the holidays, and he wore me down. And I said, I'll tell you what, I'll find half the cost of this if you can find a partner. So it's great that the Commons Foundation is here because Nick Stone, our Assistant Community Service Director, ended up connecting with the Commons Foundation. And so together, the city and the Commons Foundation have the first, what I hope is, annual lights in Piper Park. We've had kind of a quiet opening, and we're now sort of officially unveiling the lights. And I know the Commons Foundation is sponsoring this Friday from 5:00 to 6:30, Hot Cocoa, for folks who want to come out and walk around and enjoy the lights. The lights are on each day, each evening, from 5:00 to somewhere between 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock. And I did maybe nudge, now that I'm a believer, I did nudge Nick that he might accidentally cause the timer to stay on a little longer since so far, nobody's complained. But we've actually, I don't think in my time I've ever, and Nick's gleefully, probably be laughing I'm bringing this up, but he's only getting compliments. That did not happen very often for city staff. So we're pretty pleased about this, and I hope everybody will go down and take a look.
I think there's your response. Thank you very much. Council members' oral reports and comments. Are there council members that have reports this evening? Vice Mayor Paulson?
Thanks. Yeah, first, I wanted to tail on what the city manager said and thank Nick myself because I didn't know it was him, and thank you for giving him credit. I've gone down there a lot, and I feel it's a real addition. And I also sent an email to our Public Works Director, Julian. I noticed that all the LED lights, it seems, in the city have finally been replaced by Tanco. And I even sent him a picture of a view of the sky where I was just thrilled. I mean, it's going to save us money, and it's really more hospitable. My main report is about the rent stabilization ad hoc. I don't think my partner, Councilmember Harrah, and I've talked much, but I just wanted to say that we have been working on this quite diligently. We had a meeting before. We knew this, it would not be agendized for tonight. But one of the steps we took was to try to provide staff with some direction to start drafting model, you know, well, at least to look at parameters for legislation. So I really appreciate everyone's patience with this process, and I feel personally committed to putting something out that's going to be in the interests of all the tenants as well as the ownership community in Larkspur. And I believe that if we were hasty, we might have something that's actually inferior in quality. So we're working on it. Well, you know, the holidays are here, and we had Thanksgiving and coming Christmas, but that is very much in progress. So appreciate everyone's patience, and we'll continue on the effort. And that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Other council member reports. Councilmember Harrah?
Yeah, so I was going to start to say something about the folks who just left and thank them, thank Joe and his wife for appearing here tonight. That was very gracious of them to make the appearance. But even more so, I want to welcome Ann Morrison to this process. Ann and I have had some conversations about this transition, and I am very enthusiastic about the role that I expect you will play in making what has started out as a great success to be even more successful. So I wanted to make that comment. Secondly, I also would like to reflect on the fact that we just had an election. And we have two new re-elected members of the city council and one new member of the city council who's present here tonight, Kevin Carroll. And I want to say congratulations, not just to myself, but to those of us who have succeeded in weaving through the difficulties of an election process. And particularly, that goes to Mr. Carroll, who did a great job. And we will look forward to seeing him, and I think at our next meeting on this dais. Just briefly, MCE Clean Energy, as you all know, I'm on the board there and the chair of the board's executive committee. We will be going through a transition with MCE's board leadership in the next, I think, tomorrow. There is a board chair who's transitioning off because of his own election cycle, and we will be voting on new members. I do not anticipate that I will be changing my role as chair of the executive committee, but we will be seeing some new faces there, and I'm looking forward to working with the new leadership there. In fact, I'm looking forward to moving their induction into those positions when we have that opportunity. And finally, I just want to recognize our council member Way's absence tonight and the reason for that being the passing, recent passing, I think last week, last Thursday, I think, of her beloved husband, Lawrence Larry Way. And I would like to request, if the mayor allows to, when we get to the point, to adjourn in Larry's memory. And I'll make a motion to that effect. But I just want to comment at this point. Having gotten to know Larry a bit during the course of the last nine years that I've been on this council, it is with great regret that I see his passing. He's a wonderful man. He's very lucky to have Catherine as his wife. And I want to express my sympathies for their family for letting him go in a peaceful way. And as I said, I'd like to have this meeting tonight adjourned in his memory. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Without objection, we'll add that to the agenda. Also, we have one other Larkspur resident who will be mentioned at that time. Other council member reports. Councilmember Candell?
Sure, just very quickly, just to let everybody know, there's a second subcommittee dealing with potential means-based subsidies as an alternative to rent control. We've had some meetings on that front, and while there's still negotiations going on, I'm anticipating I'm anticipating there will be, uh, an alternative, uh, option, uh, for the council, uh, which would, um, include, uh, subsidies for people who need them, uh, as well as, uh, a rent stabilization, uh, for the people in prime. Um, as that was kind of the, uh, the impetus to, to getting this, this whole process started. I think that at the end of the day, some people will be better off with that and some would not. And we'll, we'll just have that conversation, you know, when, uh, uh, when the time comes, just want to give you an update. That's the direction we're really heading. Uh, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further council member reports, we'll move to the public hearings. And I'll open the public hearing. We have two this evening. Uh, the first one is adoption of ordinance ten sixty-two. May we have a staff report?
I believe the community development director, Elise Simonian, is joining us by Zoom this evening.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
At the last meeting, council introduced an ordinance that would adopt the two thousand and two building standards with local amendments. Staff is recommending adoption of the ordinance tonight. The ordinance includes a new chapter on gate regulations to address the number of documented deaths caused by dates, gates that come off the tracks. The code amendment will require some simple steps that would reduce the risk of a gate falling onto a person if it comes off the track and tips. One of them is the installation of posts that would stop the gate before it got all the way to the ground. And the cost is in the range of, of just fifty to a hundred dollars for some of these solutions. We want to encourage property owners and businesses that have these large gates to get them inspected. Many are installed with features that stop the gate from falling all the way to the ground. And Eric Quanbeck, who developed the draft code with the city of San Rafael, has shared a two and a half minute video which provides a little more information about some of the deaths reported from these preventable accidents. And I'd like to play the videos that the public can be aware of the seriousness of these risks and help spread the word. Please let me know if you're unable to hear the video when it begins.
Playing at recess, Alex closed a metal gate and it fell, crushing him. The four hundred pound gate, thirty feet long, had also toppled a month earlier.
His death was preventable. He should still be here with us.
Tonight, an Everett boy is dead after first responders say he was crushed by a twenty foot wrought iron gate. An off-duty paramedic jumped into action just seconds after the accident and started CPR. But the boy died at the scene. The gate collapsed at the Sulemita Slavic Church on Evergreen Way at about four thirty this afternoon.
It took four men to move the heavy wrought iron security gate onto a truck. It gave us a real sense of the awful force of the twenty foot gate when it fell on top of a ten-year-old boy who was inside the church parking lot side of the gate when it collapsed off the wheels it rode to open and close.
I'm standing on cross drive in Citrus Heights and it was here, police say that a six-year-old boy last night was pulling closed. The gate went past this stop which was meant to support it and the gate fell over on the child.
Hello, everybody. Good evening from Fort Bend County near Rosheren tonight with a heartbreaking story. A seventy-four-year-old woman who lives in the home where you see the flashing lights behind me, she was killed tonight and here's how. The sheriff's office says this appears to be a tragic accident. The woman had had family over and as they left, she was closing the wrought iron gate, twelve to fifteen foot long that ran on a track in front of her house.
Sons and family have been coming together to remember an eight-year-old boy who died in a tragic accident.
Matthew Catlett was crushed by a gate in his own neighborhood.
If you look over here, you can see the memorial that was set up the night after it happened. There are candles still lit on the night before his funeral.
The Quanbecks are starting a nonprofit to raise safety awareness. The family sees Alex's death as a call to action and his legacy, saving other kids. He is still the heartbeat of his family.
So I appreciate sharing the word about this dangerous issue and hopefully we'll get residents of Larkspur and also all the communities in Marin County to inspect their gates. So tonight we're just recommending that you adopt the ordinance tonight and that concludes my staff report unless you have any questions for me.
All right. Uh, thank you very much, Elise. Are there questions of staff regarding this agenda item? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? We have, uh, had this on previous agendas.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. There is no public comment.
All right, I'll close the public hearing on this item and bring it back to the council for further discussion and a motion. If there's, uh, any council discussion at this point, council member Candell.
Uh, no, I was just gonna make a motion to, uh,
Please do, sir.
Uh, motion passed the resolution.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'd be honored to second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Council member Candell?
Yes.
Council member Harif?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hiller?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next public hearing, which we will open, is adoption of ordinance ten sixty-three. May we have a staff report, please?
Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Hiller, members of the council. Uh, we're here today, um, do you recall in November sixteenth, uh, council meeting, we introduced ordinance ten sixty-three, which repealed chapter fourteen oh four of the municipal code and then reenacted it, which is basically the Larkspur City Fire Code. And, um, it's part of the triennial code cycle that goes through every three years, which is based off of the international fire code and the California Building Standards Commission that takes that code that adds California amendment specifics to it. And then that was published on July first of twenty twenty-two, which then allowed, um, local governments and local fire departments to look at the California Fire Code and make local amendments based on local findings. The biggest changes, um, within this, uh, code cycle adoption that's different than prior years is, uh, chapter forty-nine of the California Fire Code. Typically that was one page. Um, this year it's gotten pretty elaborate and that chapter deals with defensible space standards and vegetation management. Um, what we did as, um, local fire officials is we made sure that that chapter was in line with what our local standards are, that we have been adopted here previously within Larkspur. Um, and so we've aligned all that and worked with all of our partners throughout the county to make sure that we are in alignment throughout the entire county. Um, so our recommendation tonight is for the council to pass ordinance numbers ten sixty-three is reenact or, um, eliminating, uh, chapter fourteen oh four and then reenacting chapter fourteen oh four as the new twenty twenty-two California Fire Code. Um, with that, that's the end of my report. I'm here for any questions I can have.
Thank you very much, chief. Are there questions from the council members regarding this item? Are there members of the public? Oh, Vice Mayor Paulson?
I, I just wanted to thank, uh, Chief Martin for bringing this forward and knowing how important defensible space is and all the experience you've had in the last couple of years, especially with the wildfire prevention agency. So thank you very much.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments regarding this agenda item? This is a public hearing.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. There is no public comment.
All right, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and a,
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to move this forward.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Council member Candell?
Yes.
Council member Harif?
Yes.
Council, Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Hiller?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. That closes our public hearings for this evening. Thank you very much. We'll move to business items. We have one, which is item eight point one, consideration of a parklet policy. May we have a staff report, please?
Uh, good evening, Mayor Hiller, members of council, members of the public. Um, I'm Julian Skerritt, I'm the public works director for the city of Larkspur. Um, and so the item we have before you tonight is consideration of, uh, the city's parklet policy. Um, as you may recall, we had a number of, uh, public meetings, uh, culminating in the adoption, um, of a parklet policy that we set an expiration date of December thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-two and said we would come back, um, and consider whether to extend or amend or terminate the policy, uh, at some time in the future. So here we are, um, tonight with the, um, expiration of the current policy, uh, within the next month. And so, um, the three options that we have, uh, for you tonight is, uh, to allow the policy as it is to expire, um, at the end of this month. Um, you could also choose to extend the policy as is for another year or another two years or, uh, to a date certain or indefinitely. Um, and then the third option would be if there are tweaks or revisions that you would like to make to the policy, uh, before, uh, amending it, um, and extending it, um, into the future. So those are the, the options for consideration tonight. Um, I did, um, make a few revisions to this versus what's in the staff report, some updates from feedback that I got today. Uh, so I did, um, insert this into the presentation. This is just looking at what the other, um, jurisdictions in Marin County um, have done with, uh, parklets. And so San Anselmo, San Rafael and Nevada have permanent parklet policies in place, uh, today. The other jurisdictions all have temporary, uh, parklet standards that they keep extending on a six-month and a, and a, sometimes a year, uh, basis. Um, so this is just a review of what's in the current policy as you had adopted it. Uh, we did say that all the, the parklets that constructed must be on the sidewalk and that the use of the parking spaces was to be for the sidewalk bypass. So in essence, uh, the seating area for a restaurant would be closer to the restaurant and then the pedestrians would walk around that seating area, um, in a bypass that was constructed in a parking space. Um, we did say there should be a limit of six parking spaces, uh, per city block. Uh, after that point, we wouldn't allow any more parklets in a block. We also restricted the size of parklets, uh, to two parking spaces, which is approximately forty feet in length. Um, we did allow both public and private parklets. So a public, private, uh, public parklet would be one that, um, somebody would construct, but anybody would be able to sit in it. And a private one that are also called streeteries is where they're reserved for a specific, uh, business. Um, and then, uh, all of the costs of constructing the permit, of constructing the parklet, plus all the permit fees and a rental fee were to be borne, um, by the permatee. Um, and that we did adopt design elements for these parklets. And so, uh, we said they had to be, uh, substantially in conformance with, uh, the design standards that the city of Nevada, um, adopted. Uh, this is for planters and railings and, um, umbrellas and, and things like that so that there's some design consistency. Um, you also restricted parklets, uh, they could only be on Magnolia Avenue. And we added the requirement, uh, that parklets, uh, needed to be approved by not just the business owner, but also the property owner if it was a different, um, entity. Um, so those are the, uh, basics of, uh, what's in the policy today. And so the action item for you tonight is to consider whether we want to extend, um, the policy out further or whether we're okay with having it end at the end of, um, December. So I'm available for, uh, any questions.
All right, um, I'll entertain council member questions. I'm going to lead with one. In doing this, I recall the conversation was, uh, connected to parking spaces as well. And I'm wondering it, in the consideration or, uh, offering of extension of this policy, has any, uh, additional analysis been done regarding the downtown specific plan, comma? The parking supply as described in that specific plan and any reductions to that parking supply?
We have not undertaken any parking analysis at this point. Um, again, we're still, um, in a condition where there are, um, COVID, uh, related impacts to business and how people are conducting, um, themselves. So any parking analysis we do would be a snapshot in time and, uh, we don't think it would, uh, relate to a long-term, um, parklet policy as far as if we were to relate it to, to parking. Um, so we have not done any parking analysis at this time. Um, you know, the thought was anecdotally, we would look at how parking was in the downtown and if parklets started to pop up, see if there was any reduction. But we didn't actually have any takers during this last six months. None of the parklets were put up again. Um, so we haven't had occasion to go out and, and, and monitor if parking has, uh, been diminished by, by parklets because we haven't had any constructed, so.
Thank you. Council, other council member questions? Vice Mayor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, just a quick one. In the time since we passed the policy, has there been any discussion with staff? Any requests, you know, from any of the businesses or, you know, the clients who, you know, patronize the businesses or anything?
Um, we did have some conversations with, um, some of the, uh, businesses that had parklets before and chose not to put them back. Um, and they were considering, um, applying for the new parklets, but they were concerned about the, uh, the deadline of December of this year. Um, and that they were looking at a six-month window for having their parklets and potentially three of those months being winter or rain. So at the time, they didn't think it was, uh, worth the investment because they all would have had to build different parklets. They couldn't put back the ones they had before because they don't conform to the new standards. So, uh, they were weighing the investment versus the, uh, the deadline of the end of this year. But there, there was interest in general, but nobody went through the process of, of applying or, or submitting plans for what they wanted to do.
So, so as a follow-up question, I, I think we had four businesses or was it five on Magnolia that had parklets before we put the policy in place?
Yeah, there were four structures for,
Four structures and, and just as a head count, all have all four of those expressed interest?
Um, three of them expressed interest in some, um, format of having a parklet in the future.
Okay.
Uh, but there was some aspect of the current policy that led them not to do it at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Other council member questions? Council member Candell?
Uh, yes, sir, just, uh, in your opinion, um, if we extend this for hypothetically twelve months, uh, does that give enough, uh, time security for people to feel that they can design the proper, you know, parklet, uh, get it constructed and still, um, benefit from it? Um, I mean, I, 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 I heard you say that they were concerned that it didn't make sense with the, the limit. Do you think if we extended it a year, that would give them the security to, to do this? Or do you think they would need something more permanent?
And I, I can't say for sure, but I would say based on my conversations that I had before, um, one of the business owners was very much on the fence about whether they were going to do it or not. So I feel that, um, um, if all circumstances are the same with the last conversation I had with them, that they probably would move forward with something if they had an entire season, uh, to have a parklet out, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other council member questions? Council member Harif?
Did, just a quick question. Um, in the conversations with the business owners, uh, that have, uh, taken advantage of our parklet policy, have you been provided with any empirical data about the economic impacts, plus or minus, to those businesses? Uh, in terms of, uh, having the parklet up, uh, or not having the parklet up, whether it's actually had an impact on their business, plus or minus?
I don't have any numbers, but I definitely got general feedback that the parklets were, um, a savior during COVID, uh, when either indoor was shut down or people were reluctant to eat indoors. I don't have any hard numbers on what that percentages were, but we definitely did get the sentiment that, um, that they definitely, it definitely did help their, their business in a measurable amount.
Okay, and was that, was that view expressed in the context of, uh, the pandemic, which we may be seeing could continue a little bit further into this year for various reasons?
Yeah, these conversations were six to twelve months ago when people were still, um, on the fence.
Right.
About eating indoors and doing other things indoors.
Right, so circumstances may have changed. So that's it. Thanks.
Uh, two questions. First one back to parking and its relationship to this policy question. Uh, the downtown specific plan has a parking policy at the city. Uh, the downtown specific plan has a parking policy that the city has in place. This policy that we're considering, I believe cannot be considered in isolation. If we're going to be reducing uh the supply of the parking in the downtown, especially uh where certain properties have parking on site and certain properties don't, and those properties are constrained because of the shared supply. Um, I would think both those policy questions need to be on the agenda at the same time. That's my, it would you, how, what are your thoughts on that is my first question? And the second one, uh just uh taking council members, council member Candell's description of a twelve-month extension uh as a scenario. What happens at the end of the twelve months? Are they expected to remove the parklet?
If the policy were not further extended, then yes.
And and that would be clearly explained in the policy. Because those costs would be in addition to those of installing the park.
Yes, and in fact, the the policy contemplates that if the city chooses, we can charge an upfront fee, a deposit uh for the cost of removing the parklet in the event that it needs to be removed and the business owner doesn't remove it.
Thank you. Uh, I'll I'll revisit this during discussion. Are there further council member questions before I open it to for public questions in common? Allison, are there members of the public that would like to offer questions, ask questions or make comments regarding this item? And I would also invite councilmember-elect Carol to for his thoughts if he so wishes.
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members? There's no public comment.
All right. Any takers? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for uh discussion. Councilmember Candell, would you like to start?
Sure. Um, you know, I I uh my concern with parklets was that originally they had no design review. Uh, and they could, people could put up whatever they wanted and it could not uh look uh in the way that we might want it to look. As there is design review right now, I don't have a a problem with extending the parket policy. Um, I wouldn't want to extend it for less than a year because uh as Julian was saying that, you know, if people go to invest in it, they want to have a sufficient amount of time to make it worth it. So I would be in favor of extending it for a year, but I would also be happy to listen to other suggestions that people had.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I I'm appreciating your comments about parking and I forgot to ask the um Public Works Director, in the policy, I I believe we stipulated a maximum number of parking spots. It had been three and it was reduced to two, or can you refresh my memory?
Yeah, so there's two requirements uh related to the number of parking spaces. Um, the first is no more than six spaces can be lost in a city lot total. Um, and the other is no one parklet can be more than two spaces. So those are the two uh policies that relate to the number of parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. And I'm and with that answer, I I feel the impact on parking before was um potentially a problem, you know, because with COVID, for example, the theater was shut down and theater often uh increases the demand and, you know, we had had some complaints, but I think if we're if we're concerned about parking right now, one possibility is to further restrict that, you know, if it's maybe a maximum of four instead of six, but I think two seems fairly reasonable. Um, and and along with uh councilmember Candell, I'm pretty concerned about the wave of illnesses and people still preferring outdoor seating. So uh I'm I'm leaning towards a one-year extension and that seems to give the businesses a proper planning cycle and it gives the council and the city and public input enough flexibility if we need to change our minds. Thank you.
Councilmember Hera?
Uh, just just very briefly, um and and I guess my questions um a few minutes ago were in a cede into these comments. Um, the parklet policy that we adopted was was an emergency measure based upon circumstances that related to COVID at the time. COVID hasn't gone away. Uh, I think we all see that in the in the newspapers and on and other media outlets. So for that reason, I would be supportive of a limited extension of the parklet policy. Uh, I don't think a year is necessary and I kind of like the idea that it should be considered uh to be extended on a seasonal basis, which could take us through the winter months into the spring and we could see how uh the pandemic uh evolves if if at all. Um, but my concern uh throughout this process has been the impact on the uh visual and historic nature of our downtown district. Uh, in addition to the parking issues, which our mayor has properly brought up. And I don't think it should be extended beyond what is absolutely necessary to uh minimize the negative impacts perceived or real uh to the business interests that would like to see this policy extended. I don't really see a year is needed for that. I would be supportive of a lesser extension, say six months to get us through the season. Um, but I would defer to the judgment of the council on that subject. Thank you.
I I hear a consensus. I I'm not going to uh try to um do anything to upset that, but I I want to say one thing about um real estate in the downtown. The value of every one of those downtown properties is based on not only what's on the property, but its relationship to parking. And I guarantee you that if you make a decision that takes away parking spaces from in front of one of those businesses, you are going to reduce the value of that property. And you can go to the downtown specific plan and you can do the economic analysis that was missing from that plan. And I hope you revisit the parking policy in conjunction with a real estate analysis, so you're not creating negative impacts on real estate without knowing what you're doing. And I'll leave it at that. So with that, is there a motion?
Oh, uh, let let me uh address um uh Kevin, your 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 comment. Um, and uh the reason that I mentioned a year and not six months is only that the business owners are going to be uh it it's going to be not cheap to do this. We're requiring them to go through design standard review. We're requiring them to pay to build it. We're requiring them to take, put money in to uh take it away. Uh, and I I think there has to be sufficient incentive uh for somebody to do it. If if we're going to say, you know, we think it's in our community's best interest to allow outdoor dining and parklets, um, I think we have to properly incentivize the businesses to do it, otherwise they're not going to do it. And if the period of time is too short, uh I think what Julian was alluding to was they're going to say, you know, and it's it's just not worth it. You know, in the winter months, nobody's going to sit outside, you know, so you're really asking me to build this thing for, you know, three months. Uh, and I just am afraid that they're all going to pass on it. And if we decide that it's a, we think it's in our community's best interest, I'd like to actually uh incentivize them to do it, which and I think a year is is kind of the the minimum time that would allow them to build it and, you know, have people outdoors for, you know, a summer season, you know, which doesn't end until September, October. Uh, and then we can revisit it next, uh, you know, next winter. Uh, so that was why I suggested a year. Um, and why I would uh I would make a motion uh uh to extend it for one year.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Would you please call the roll?
And and I'm sorry, but before we actually vote on this, Kevin, did you want to uh discuss this at all? I mean, I I I.
I know, just a a reflection. I I understand those comments. Um, and I'm uh sensitive to the concerns that motivated them. Uh, at the same time, uh listening to our director of public works, I I didn't really see anything other than some anecdotal suggestions about uh the complications of making something less than a year would impose upon business owners. I really didn't hear that. Um, I didn't hear any evidence of negative economic impacts as a result of the parking or the parklet policy that we've had in place. I I know there are some business owners that have expressed strong desires uh about this issue. Um, but I I remain unconvinced that it is really had a material impact on the business operations uh of those restaurants, because that's what they are. Um, and I am very um I don't want to say sympathetic, but um understanding of the concerns that our mayor has expressed about the connection between parking and the operation of other businesses in particular that could be adversely affected by an extension of the the park of the policy. So I I I would be um supportive of a uh less than a year extension. I think six months is plenty of time for folks to figure this out. Um, so if the motion is to extend by a year, I would likely abstain um and defer to the council overall um in terms of its uh direction on this, on this issue. But I think the time is probably, if it hasn't come and gone for parklets in the city of Larkspur, it's about ready to. And I think it's appropriate for the council to be a little more assertive in expressing its views on their viability on a long-term basis.
Uh, I would support this if if you would immediately take up the parking issue just to look at it before making a move. Once you allow people to construct what amounts to a new sidewalk, curb, et cetera, asking them to remove it, no matter what your deadline is, is going to be very, very difficult. And once you start losing parking spaces, you can't get them back under the, it's going to be very hard to get them back under those circumstances. So I would uh support the motion uh if the council would agree to look, just have a have a look at the parking policy in the downtown specific plan before you move forward because two spaces, much much less six, takes up a substantial amount of the block, you know, downtown Larkspur. I mean, there's a question of proportionality, I think that needs to be just double-checked.
So so uh and I'm sorry, ju- just my understanding, um i- if you are saying that you're supportive of the motion with the study, does that mean?
Well, that's not a study, looking at the existing policy, so that you understand the context with in which you're making the decision.
All right, so I any, I'm I'm not sure, you know, re- you know, uh in real time what that means. So today we asked the policy and asked for a study or we put off passing?
Pass the policy, review it, and you might want to revisit it with the new council member.
Right, but if we pass the policy.
You'll have to ask to revisit it.
Yeah, then and and store owners may rely on that. And at that point, you know, if somebody's already.
Hear from other store owners too.
You know, I I.
I'm not, I'm not going to support it if we can't have that kind of check in the mix.
No, I I I understand my 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 concern just just, you know, uh so I'm clear. My concern is if we pass it and people apply and they start constructing, then they've relied on us saying you can have it for a year. Then regardless of what the uh the parking study shows, we're going to have to have it for a year. So as long as we're comfortable saying.
Okay, I'm worried about asking them to take it out after a year and them and them fighting you.
Okay, so uh and my understanding is if we are clear that this is a one-year extension, then anybody who applies for this will be told to one-year extension, you may have to take it down within a year if it's not extent, uh if it's not extended and they are agreeing as that one of their conditions. Am I understanding that right, Julian?
Yes, it's a condition of the permit that the city has the authority to require the removal um of the structure within a certain number of days' notice at the perma-te's expense.
Okay, and they're going to put a deposit down so that if they don't remove it, then we can remove it and just take it out of their deposit. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Yeah, so I.
And you're using the expression tear it down and remove it. You're going to be ripping up the street.
Well, this is.
Asking them to rip up the street.
Th- th- this is actually my understanding. It's going to be constructed on the sidewalk, that we're going to have the side, the the pedestrian's going to be on the street. There's going to be something on the sidewalk and I, when we say construction, I'm assuming that it's not going to do damage to the sidewalk, that we're going to be able to remove it without any a- any issues. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, so the current design standard for the parklet uh consists of the tables and chairs and barriers on the sidewalk. Then in the parking space, the parking space um is filled in with a wooden platform that is not fixed to the street and it also has railings on it. So it's essentially like the parklets that were out there before. The the base, the floor of them, uh but you take the walls and the windows and the roofs and everything down and you're constructing a walkway. Uh, but it is required to be um modular and movable. Um, you know, we haven't had conversations about, are we going to require them to take them out for July fourth parade? Um, you know, details like that. Um, but typically, these things are required. We're not going to allow them to build to extend the sidewalk. Like, these are not perm- permits for a permanent sidewalk extension out into the street that's undoable. These are um, the policy is for a modular um sidewalk platform to be built out in the parking spaces such that if there's a utility project that needs to go forward and it needs to be removed, um, they're easy to take away and and bring back.
So 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 this means that one of the requirements is that when it's removed, it it there's not going to be any damage to the sidewalk or the street by removing it because there's nothing permanent going into the sidewalk or the street that would cause damage. Is that accurate?
Correct.
I I withdraw my condition. I misunderstood. I apologize. I I thought this was going to be an extension of the sidewalk and curb.
No, we're not allowing any permanent widening of the sidewalk under this policy. Um, they would have to be modular expansion out into the street.
So um parking spaces could be restored?
Yes.
I'll I'll support the motion.
Okay. All right, so I I will make the motion then to extend uh this uh policy uh for twelve months until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, and I'll second again.
Please call the roll.
Yes.
No.
Vice Mayor Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Helmer.
Yes. The motion passes three to one. Uh, that can uh concludes our agenda items this evening. Are there, is there any other information from staff? Thank you so much for all the work. Thank you for straightening me out on the last item. Appreciate that. Um, if there are no uh other items or further discussion, we will adjourn in memory of Dr. Lawrence Larry Way and Finis Smith, a longtime resident of Larkspur and Heather Gardens. Uh, we are adjourned.